Goshen, New York's information presenter. Welcome to 2011-5-26 Goshen, New York Town Hall Committee. What kind of job do you have?
Okay.
Amendments to the agenda. Does anybody have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes. I have one. Michelle was supposed to call and get this on. It's very minor. I don't even know if we have to put it on anyway. It has to do with one of our Donald bus.
Oh, painting it?
Painting it, getting it rushed out and so forth. When you bring it up, I'll just call.
I told her to get another bid.
Huh?
I told her to get another bid.
Oh, so you're the one that...
All the high one.
No, no. Get one more expensive. You get one for what she's gonna get to do all that bodywork. Heck, they're not gonna work. They're gonna paint over the dirt and then turn it back to you. But hey, that's my opinion.
Well, I'm just...
Okay. But anyway, we'll get to it. Any other amendments to the agenda? Privilege of the floor. On the agenda. All right.
Privilege of the floor to speak to the agenda? Or are you moving that up?
You can talk about anything on the agenda.
Right. I would like to make a proposal tonight. I don't know if you just want to do that under general privilege of the floor at the end. I can even talk to you informally about it.
Let's do that then. Yeah, that'd be good. Okay, reports. Phil, let's start down here.
There's an issue that we... A personnel issue, which is on the agenda. I've met with the police chief four times this month already.
How's he doing?
He's not doing as well as...
He wasn't beginning of the month.
At the beginning of the month, he's not doing as well. However...
See, you knew four times in one month. What did he have?
I know. But we'll go over the generic stuff. We talked about the two part-time police officers. That he will just be adding to his staff. So he has a pool. Because we're not replacing at this particular point. Not replacing the full-time officer that left for another position. And I told him we were not gonna fill that position. Not that he hired two police officers. He just needs a pool of part-timers. So I said, sure. We all agreed on that. I said, we're making a motion tonight on that? Yes, or we need to make a motion?
We can.
No, I think we wait until we get the names...
Correct. In a clear security-wise...
Okay, well...
George...
No, I told him that we wanted a copy of the application.
Correct. Unless you had the...
No, I said, we wanted... We want... Are we ready for it?
We're ready.
I did tell him that we wanted a copy of the application resume. He said, no problem. But he has already checked them out. You know, they'll be graduating with the academy, the police academy. I mentioned last time. They paid for that themselves. That being said, once again, it's just a filler option. As far as another car. We had talked about an additional car. And we said we could take advantage of funds. Discuss that further. Until then, we're not even gonna discuss it. So he understood that. We have a situation with the Peshawar program. Where there's a need bulletproof glass. And there's no real time constraint. I am now in the process of trying to get a grant. In order to pay for that glass to cover, which is important. I think I can get some funding for that. So we don't have to take it out of the budget. So basically, I just had a little discussion. It involves personnel in each episode.
Yeah, well, the... If you go up to the department market.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, we did have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Farmers Market at 12 o'clock on Friday. Congresswoman Naomi Haywood was there. She said a few words. And Kyle Roddy, the mayor of Goshen, and I represent the town. Then we all said a few words and cut the ribbon. The weather wasn't as good as it could be. But it did hold up while we were being interviewed. So it was a nice kickoff. And I think we're gonna have a really good season. The one other thing with the police that I did forget is we did obtain a grant for the buckle-up program. And that's where they'll have roadblocks. And they'll make sure that people buckle up. Fund additional police officers. Well, I know they were out there doing it. Because I had gone to a funeral on Monday. And I was stopped on my way to Florida. Then in the afternoon, I went to Chester. The same roadblock was there. So I was stopped twice in the same day. So it's a successful program. And of course, we give grants for that.
See, Phil, just what does the grant pay for?
It's a buckle-up program. They play for two additional police officers to come.
I just wanted to hear that.
Yeah. And, you know, they stop cars and make sure they're buckled up and stuff.
You say the two additional, they're ours, right?
Oh, yeah.
Fun. And there's no mandatory hiring afterwards?
No, no, no.
I have a question, Phil. Just to bring it up. If you have a buckle-up program and you're stopping cars. I've never seen a car there doing the process for eight straight hours. It's normally two or three hours. Do they pay for that police officer for coming in for the whole day? Or just for the two or three hours while he's doing buckle-up?
Well, they pay for the... They allot so many dollars for the two police officers. Time. They just charge back those particular hours. So it could be two days, five days, I mean, two hours, five hours.
Okay.
Whatever. And, you know, while they're doing that, they look for inspections. They look for registrations. So there are other things that are involved while they're doing the buckle-up.
So is this additional coverage?
Yeah.
You follow what I'm saying?
It's a third or fourth patrol up there.
That's what I'm saying. That's coverage. That's interesting.
Oh, yeah.
As opposed to us, etc., etc.
No, no, no. It's a...
Okay.
Quick question for Phil. With these new part-timers that he's putting on a list, does he explain to them that they just can't... Before, we'd got people come on our force and then two weeks later leave. I remember we hired some people in the Garden State Parkway Police. And they say for a month that they have to pay for those uniforms? Rather than us, I believe that's part of the contract.
That's human. That's part of a human contract. They have so they have to stay so...
We've had a number of young fellows join us on part-time basis.
Oh, no. They need one for a certain period of time. They have to pay for the contract. Once again, at this juncture, we don't have to send them to the police academy. We don't pay for any...
Back, you know, we said that.
They pay their own. And, you know, they're part-timers, so there's no benefits involved. And, I mean, it's...
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Just a couple things. One thing, the other night when Broderick was here, I asked him to find out what the tipping fees charges were this year for the cleanup. Just to see how we felt according to budget. Cleanup this year was very light. And it probably had to do because it started the Monday after Easter. But the tipping fees this year only amounted to $19,000 compared to other years that were quite higher. So it just came in $8,000, $9,000 less than what's budgeted. Now, years ago, we had a lot more money out there. And we reduced it as time went by. So, but I just want to let you know. So the tipping fees did come under budget. The other thing I was gonna bring up was about the road program. But I see you have that as an agenda item. And basically, I don't have anything else because it's prepared everything during the last two weeks.
Very good. Ken?
Very quickly. Nothing exciting happening out in the water. So, which is good, no one man breaks. We had a good meeting with Hamiltonian last week. I think the people were happy with that presentation. And, you know, we did meet just for the record with Hamiltonian and Ocadia to discuss the rates that are coming here. And I think that went fairly well too. So other than that, that's it.
Super. Thank you very much. I have just two items. One is the CEO of Orange and Rock, Bill Long. He wanted to meet with me. So he and Eric, he was a customer service person, came in. And we talked probably about an hour. Talked about cost reduction. Talked about economic growth. We talked about O and R. We talked about the town. It was strictly business. No specifics about who's gonna do what, what's gonna happen, whoever. But very, very nice man. Pretty bright man. Very well schooled in what he does. And so it was an enjoyable meeting for both of us. The other item is the reason why I didn't go to the ribbon-cutting for the... I mean, the Farmers Day Market is that I was invited to deliver meals on wheels with one of the Goshen people who did that. And one of the volunteers. And it was really interesting because the... Excuse me. The... I don't know how many people volunteered for Goshen. But the gentleman that I went with, John Cavallaro. Cavaliere?
Yeah, in the literal.
It's Christine's husband. But anyway, very, very nice man. And we went out for probably two and a half, three hours making these deliveries. And it's interesting because I thought the people would be very chatty and whatnot. But so many people, you knock on the door, they open the door, they take the meal, and they're going back in. And I kinda liked to engage them. But they... They're very old and frightened. One or two others were very talkative. And you could tell they were lonely and they were willing to talk to you as long as you wanted to stay. But anyway, I really hold these people in high regard. They were not only for Goshen, but for all the areas. Because these people don't get any recognition. No one knows who they are. They spend their own gas money and car service. I would recommend highly to anybody if they want to do something like that to help out. Because I think John really got a lot out of it.
That is a Goshen chapter?
This was... This is Orange County.
Okay. It was funny, I was asked about this the other day by a senior citizen. I was like, I didn't think we had meals on wheels coverage in Goshen.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we do. Part of Orange County.
At my point of view, I see the citizens as actually as a hub.
Right. That's what I mean. Is it geographically located in Goshen or covers a number of towns, the dial-a-bus?
Dial-a-bus. I mean, I'm sorry. It's the Office of the Aging, Orange County Office of the Aging. And it covers, I think, all of Orange County. There's several people there. They brought the big truck in with all the meals. They broke them up by district or whatever. And we got the meals.
It's the type of thing that the request has to come from the resident. Just so you understand. So, I mean, that's why I... Again, I'm not an authority, but I was unaware. I don't think a lot of our senior citizens value... Not that you are, but I'm just... I didn't know they were aware.
Where she is.
I didn't know, I wasn't aware we even had the service here.
I know it was very active a while back, right?
Right. It connects with the pantry and all. But then it dried out. And I was like, gotta go to Middletown.
No, 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 no. It's here and it's well. And I don't know how it's advertised by the Office of the Aging. But it is. It's being done.
Oh, it's good.
It's a pretty fun day. But it took two and a half, three hours to do it. You start at 11:00, you're done by 1:30 or whatever it is.
My mother gets up and she's in the city. It's like Tuesday. It's great.
And see, a lot of towns, like Walker has their own program. It may be through the county, but they have their own. So I was saying, I knew some of the towns had it. I just said, never known we didn't have it.
Then on Friday, they actually give meals Saturday and Sunday.
Really?
$1,000 a week, you can't go wrong. But it's small portion, but it's very balanced. It's great program. We're inviting people to do that.
Yeah, and, you know, and one of the other things I saw is that my mom is... I don't know how to fix this, but as you go to some people's home, you can tell they're in their 80s or 90s. They're not able to take care of their home anymore. And it needs painting. It needs that gutters cleaned and those things. And at one particular house I looked at, well, you know, it would've been awfully nice to have the neighborhood go do a...
Yeah, clean up.
Because you know that person beyond his ability to do that. But that's part of getting old, I guess. And if your family moves away and they're not here really to give you assistance.
Exactly. My father, he's 90. He's always bitching at me. Like, you spend too much of my money. And on food and all, etc. He's like, why don't you get me meals on wheels? He says, this is a senior citizen I was speaking to. And I said, hey, you're a big shot. You do all this stuff in the town. You didn't even really have it here. I swear to God. I didn't know I had it here. It was one of those father-son discussions.
We don't know much there, eh?
No, I had no idea. I'm fascinated by this. See, I don't need to take a time. I have no idea. And I know he'll be glad to hear it.
Run over to his house.
Don't tell him.
I go, don't tell him. They find out. They find out.
Dennis, find out you're a big shot.
I wanna be there, Dennis, when you deliver it to them.
Absolutely. I do have. But you know how old the people are. I'm like, Jesus Christ, how much does this hamburger cost? Or this steak? I'm like, what's the difference? Eat it. I'm paying for it. You're wasting my money. I'm like, oh, please.
We used to do the same thing.
And I'll tell you, I gotta tell you another story. I know Randy knows. He goes back to his father. My father doesn't. My father has never had a McDonald's burger. Different generation. You follow? Why would you eat that garbage? You go kill a cow and you grind it or whatever you do with it. You know? God bless. Different generations. Think about that.
Did you read about the guy that was in the record book the other day?
Yes, yes.
2,500?
Big Macs.
Big Macs?
Yes.
That guy's two or three a day. That guy should be dead.
I actually saw him on the news. I don't know what kind of health he had, but yeah.
Well, same. Okay. Okay. The next item is under old business. Would someone like to make a motion? We approve the minutes of work sessions of April 25th. And special meetings of April 27th. And the regular meeting of April 28, 2011.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
In addition to corrections to the minutes? All favors say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Right, wrong, or other? Okay. The next one is... Dennis, if you wanna go through this.
This resolution has to do with the time-wager cable provision of phone service to the town hall, senior citizen center, and police traffic building, one and two. The board, as you remember, previously discussed and reviewed this proposal. And based upon your analysis and determination that almost in all respects, financially and service-wise, these new proposals would give us better service at less cost. And as such, the resolution so authorizes the supervisor to sign any and all contracts necessary to effectuate that. And the actual proposals I have, but they run, as you know, probably 30 or 40 pages. So they're not attached to the resolution. But as long as they will be in the minutes or a reference to them, whatever we can find in the file, it'll be sufficient.
Someone to make a motion with this resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Oh, a second. Just a point of caution. This is the one where Bill Standish King, who is with all the cost reductions associated with this, probably a month or more. Madam, can we have a roll call?
Town won't ever send us out checks?
No. We're waiting.
I know that. We're gonna do this with somebody else's a lot of money.
Okay.
The supervisor voting?
Aye.
Counselor McCall?
Aye.
Counselor Cantor?
Aye.
Counselor Lingle?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Under new business, the next one is, I talked to Dennis today. This is a departure from what we've done in the past. In the past, we've got a list of, under highway law, 284, 285, whatever it is. Where we get a list of the road improvements for the year. And as a consequence, at the conclusion of that hearing, the list, you know, whether we disrode this road, it was accepted and agreed with the law. But which ones is yours? Put up on the... I think maybe it's on the tabletop. That one's picking up speed. Okay, let's see what happens.
I think it's from this machine. So it might be a problem.
Do we count?
This has nothing to do with anything.
Okay, well, your mic is...
Okay.
Maybe it's that gray one. Just to make sure gray one's turned off.
That's your problem. You have two mics close together.
Yeah, I get it. Okay. Good. Anyway, so discussing this with Dennis, he said, you know, it might really be appropriate if we approve a motion to approve the town Goshen Highway Superintendent's Improvement Program for 2011 as presented by the Goshen Highway Superintendent this past work session. So would someone like to make a motion in that regard?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Doug just outlined that is the proper procedure. And historically, I'm sure Phil remembers, years ago, that was a requirement. They would submit a rule of claim, etc. Somehow, some way, I guess, over the years, depending on personalities, we got away from it. It was a more formal, proper procedure. Obviously, Broderick should be commended for it. Because he wasn't even aware, I don't think.
When he asked the question, I said, I wasn't quite sure. That's why I called you.
Yeah. But I mean, you didn't prepare it. Think about it. We came here Monday night, we presented it. Exactly.
Okay. There's a second to that?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? I'd just like to say that the Highway Superintendent did a wonderful job of, through his background, presenting to us, trying different approaches, technologies to save money and be more efficient, longer-lasting roads. Okay, can we... Okay, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one is, on Monday, we passed a motion to authorize supervisor to submit an application to the Orange County Community Development Program for the Goshen Food Pantry. I was reading in the rules of the game that we need to do it by resolution. And so we've got a resolution to... Do I go through that for us, Dennis?
Yes. The resolution confirms with tonight's effective date that the town of Goshen being interested in submitting a funding application to the Orange County Community Development Program for the 2012 program year. And the proposal, the project is to set forth an Exhibit A. Exhibit A being a dissertation about the pantry, the food pantries. Which is, my understanding, is the application you want to proceed with.
That's correct.
And it simply requires a resolution by the board and approval thereof. And the project itself should be attached to this.
Right.
Project description.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a meeting today, which fills that a little bit in on. And with John Strobel, who runs the Goshen Food Pantry. We had our budget officer meet Barbara Sartralowski, my assistant. This has to begin by the end of the workday on Tuesday. And I'm not going to be here tomorrow, nor will I be here next week. So they're going to shepherd this thing through. Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor voting?
Aye.
Counselor McCall?
Aye.
Counselor Cantor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Doug, quick, very quick.
Yes?
Does this involve all of the churches? All of them? Would it help if we're a process, that each pastor would get a little bit of support? Does that happen anywhere? Has no bearing on the churches?
Somehow, I don't think so, based on what I read and basically what it is. They're pretty well organized. It's a well-run thing. They serve today about 70 to 80 families. They give out about 200 bags of groceries a month. And they do a lot of other ancillary things, you know, meals, other kinds. So...
Not familiar with, I just put one of them up.
Yeah, no. We will add. As you can see, I mean, they get the pastors involved and so on. But this is... It's interesting because they ask for volunteers. And they have volunteers as young as, he said, four years old. Where people will bring the children. And he gives them jobs. They stack corn with corn on shelves. He said some they just give out tickets or whatever. He said, but whoever comes to volunteer, they're thankful for. And they put everybody to work, so.
I notice the church youth group goes over there, collects food.
Yeah?
For a sudden, they go over there and...
Yeah.
That could be a program.
Yeah.
It could help them.
I think it's a good...
Go like a head start.
Yeah. It was really interesting. I think the other thing, John, Strobel, is very well-versed. You can tell he knows what he's doing. He does it well. And he's been at it doing it a long time. So I'm grateful he's doing it. Now, we do have two food pantries in Orange County that are sponsored through the Community Development Block Grant. One of them is the town of William Grove. It's actually run out of the Washington Hill Church where our budget officer attends. He knew all about it. That's why I asked him to coordinate all of this. And the other one, and that's the town. The other one is Village Green We Like. And I don't know much about that. But they've got one they're also sponsoring. They're part of this Community Development Block Grant. Okay. The next item, Lou, would you talk about dial-a-bus?
Okay. Michelle, one of our dial-a-bus, which will probably be the one... Michelle, one of our dial bus, which will probably be the one... It is the one we're going to be keeping when we get our new one. So it is our number-one dial bus. Has some damage, not damage, rust and so forth. They went to Menco to get a proposal to have it fixed. It came in at eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred and eighteen dollars. That's for supplies, labor, and paint. And I didn't know Doug had told me to go... We didn't... We really don't have to go out to bid with something less than ten thousand. But the other thing, too, she called up Orange County, and this will go down as regular maintenance. It's not costing the town anything on this. So it's just being submitted as regular maintenance. So that's all covered there. And she just felt she wanted the town board to go ahead with it. So I just wanted to present it. Today, you know, when I talked to her this morning, she asked me, who, what's going on? So I said, you know, submit me, I'll send it in. I had a copy of this, I just didn't have it, because I went to a fundraiser today. So I don't know. So Doug, I didn't know that you asked her for another one.
Well, I asked her for a second opinion. I looked at the vehicle one day, it was parked, and I thought, man, it's quite a bit rusted, this vehicle. And just based on, I just had my car painted last week. And I'm sharing with you right now, you're not going to get time to date for eighteen hundred and some odd dollars. And I really think to do an adequate job, we're going to keep this vehicle. We need to go to one of the, not the cut-rate body shops. We need to go to one or two body shops in the town or the community, and just see what they say. Because I think they're going to come back, probably five or six thousand dollars per day, but...
Make them feel good.
Well, I don't know. I'm just asking, you know, I mean, because they're going to come back.
How long are we going to keep the bus? How long do they stay in service? In other words?
Couple more years, for sure.
Couple more years. It takes quite a, you know, it takes a three, four, five years sometimes. Sometimes when we order, it takes two years just to get the new one.
So do you think this will be in service another two, three years?
Oh, I'm sure. If this is the... If it's our number-one bus now, becomes number-two bus, it will be in service.
Well, I mean, I would just ask to take someone else to look at it and you, and look at it. And we can make a decision. Particularly if it's being paid by maintenance. But it's kind of like, so many things, you get what you pay for. And you can get a payment now, and a year from now, it'll just like it looks now.
Did you tell her this today?
I didn't.
Okay. Put it on hold.
Well, don't put it on. I just drive it up to a couple of body shops and go, just go once, say, hey, give me a...
It's less than ten, but I still, you know...
Oh, no. It'll never be ten thousand.
No, I know that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we want to proceed with getting another opinion.
Get one opinion, and then I would let Broderick, who's the engineer, make the determination. And he's been around this kind of thing, warmed up, I think, so.
Okay.
All right? And then just go and do it. I mean, it's part of the maintenance program.
No problem.
But I'm glad you brought it up.
No, I wanted to at least discuss it.
Because we know what's going on. Right.
I mean, it takes probably eighteen hundred dollars to fill the gas tank on that vehicle.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to authorize the supervisor to pay manual accounts payable runs of five seventeen two thousand eleven, amounting to fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents? And manual accounts payable runs of five twenty-four two thousand eleven, amounting to two thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents? And accounts payable check run for May twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven, amounting to twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, this is the lowest I ever saw for...
It's pretty low, isn't it? Well, she was on vacation two weeks.
Some listening ones.
All the people say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we're open for a poll to the floor and anything that anybody would like to talk about. Joel, you have something?
I did. For timing reasons, if anybody else has anything to bring up, let me follow them.
I do.
Does that mean it's going to be a more dissertation?
No.
No. I'm about to run out.
It's probably for God's battery. You know, Monday is Memorial Day. And I belong to the Men's University Club in Middletown, and there's a man, I'd say certainly, that's probably eighty's. It was a dentist over in Walden. And he gave a talk. What we do is, we meet, and we have dinner, socialize. And after dinner, someone gives a paper or a speech or talk on some subject. And it's sometimes very informative, very provocative, and whatever. Well, this gentleman got up and talked about, he was one of three boys. Born in Warwick, moved to Walden when he was a little boy. Finished school there, went off to the university, and during the Second World War, the war broke out, and the draft came, and so he had to leave school. Got drafted in the draft. And for a lot of us, we don't remember. I wasn't here, but the draft went, I think, aged from... Built all the jobs, making the bullets, the planes, et cetera. So, and this was probably a year ago, and he gave this talk. And so, anyway, by the way, he died, dated four yesterday, and that's why I was thinking about it when I read his obituary in the paper. So he went off to the service, and they ended up in the Army Air Corps. And they were training him to be a fighter pilot. And so, he finished his fighter pilot training in Omaha, Nebraska, or somewhere out there, Chicago or somewhere. And he came back home to Walden to await his orders to go to some combat unit somewhere in the world. Because we were all over the world fighting, Italy, Germany, France, the Netherlands, Belgium, Japan, et cetera. And so, while he was waiting there, he got a telegram from the Department of Army, the Air Corps, and said, would you like to consider, we'd like to consider you to train to be a bomber pilot? And it'll take several more months. And so, he wrote back, said, yes, I will. So since he had a few more months, he married his high school sweetheart, and they all went back out to Omaha, wherever it was, to train. And he said he didn't get to see her much, because he wasn't trained... You know, what they would do, they'd always jump boys, and they would just try to put you through as quickly as you could, so you could get to the front lines. And so, he said, he finished his training, and he came back home again for a very short leave, said goodbye to his wife and his family. And he went back to somewhere again in the Midwest. And he and his graduating class got in these bombers, B-59s. It was in the, if you read newspaper, you'll see this guy's obituary. This guy walked in water twice a week, whether he hit it or not. This guy was a superhuman being. Ultimately, it became a dentist. So he went over there, and he got in the airplane with all the other guys, and they flew to Guam, in these brand-new airplanes. And they had to hop, skip, and jump to get to Guam. And when they got to Guam, they were given an assignment to start bombing some of the Japanese-held islands between the main island of Japan and Guam. And so, he said, the first thing they did in these big fifty-nine, B-59 bombers, you get up very high, and you drop the bombs. Well, evidently, over these islands and all, the wind was such, it blew the bombs off the targets. And so, the commanding general, this was such a fiasco, the commanding general was relieved. Because a lot of collateral damage, who knows what it was all about, you know how it goes. And they brought a new general in, who said, guys, we're going in above the tree, we're going to drop the altitude, we're going to really bomb. We're not going to miss the targets. And so, according to his obituary, he won twenty-four bombing raids on mainland Japan, Tokyo, and many of the other big cities, with these incendiary bombs. These are bombs that are full of white phosphorus and whatnot. And as soon as they open up, they're very, very hot, and they burn everything in their path. People, buildings, animals, anything, incinerated. And so, they leveled Tokyo, and they got other several cities, and doing this. And it was a many-hour, twelve, fifteen hours, eighteen hours, where from Guam, two displays had refilled the planes in route in air. And they did all of this, and he was wax eloquent in telling them how he felt, knowing what he was doing, the danger to him, the danger to his fellow pilots, the bombardier, and the gunners, and all that. And all the danger to the people that he was going to be injuring and killing. And so, he went through all of this, and then he said, when they kind of ran out of targets, then the United States bombed Hiroshima and Nausicaä, the atomic bomb, and that was the end of the war. It's hard to feel whatever that he was in. So he went through this story. And we had a person in the audience who, there are a lot of questions, because there's a... You could have made a movie of this, where this older man was talking, very sincerely. After the war, by the way, he came back, and he went to dental school, and he became a dentist, and practiced dentistry, and worked for his entire life. But someone in the audience asked a question, which I would never have asked, I don't think any of us would have asked, but this person did. Well, tell me, how do you feel, the fact that you killed all those people? It's hard to think about that question.
I really find that was a little question.
And you couldn't hear a pin drop. And this wonderful old man said, my friends and neighbors, they drafted me. They selected my name to go off the train, to do something that I didn't want to do. I wanted to continue in college, I wanted to marry my sweetheart, I wanted to have a family, I wanted to do a lot of things. They interrupted all that. And then, I went all the training, and it was very difficult, training, a lot of risk and all that. And then, when you're in this war, and you go off and you do these things, we might have four hundred airplanes go to mainland Japan, and three hundred and twenty-five come back home. And people you trained with, lived with, prayed with, ate with, you know, laughed with, are dead. Didn't make it, didn't make it back. So he said, and you know yourself, you're going to potentially experience the same thing. He said, now I'm talking about the death of destruction. The citizens in the United States, and my fellows, you know, the people who put me here, I was doing work for them, that they either couldn't do for themselves, or whether their age and gender, they couldn't do, or were unwilling to do. And I did it. And I did it to the best of my ability. And yes, I think about it, but I don't let it get me down. So I thought of that after the meeting. I don't, we all thought of that. And it's funny, because when people go to war, and you see them fly off or drive off in the Navy or the Air Force, the Army, or whatever, you think about them being injured, and you think about them perhaps dying, and you think about the families back home, you never think, at least I didn't, think about what we were doing to the other people. And the baggage that the soldiers have to live with when they come back home, thinking what havoc they brought upon somebody else. So this guy was wax eloquent. He lived this his entire life, I'm sure. And he said, flying low, you see it all. When you fly it over the next day, you see what you did the day before. You just can't escape it. You do what, and you participated in it. So on Memorial Day, I'm going to say a special prayer for this guy, and all the other ones that have done the same thing. It is, war is stupid, it is dumb, it is hostile, it's a human failure. But we were involved in it. So when we go to the parade, do this and do that, there are a lot of people, we just think, they offer a parade or whatever. But here's a guy who really gave it his best. So with that, that's my prayer to the floor.
You know, Doug, you know, the night of TV, I never heard of the South Coast area. It was during a Korean conflict. And there was this mountaintop observation post that we held. Chinese attacked this in herds of humanity. And we had landmines, we had phosphorus bombs all set up, and they just threw themselves on, we hit the piano wire. Then there was a Greek unit that was committed to assist us. And when they announced the truce, the Chinese soldiers, the Americans, and the Greeks, all embraced. And I said to myself, how stupid are these this war thing? I mean, they're all killing each other. The next thing you know, they're all hugging, saying, well, thank God, it's all over.
This is a similar, this is a different president.
You know, I was going to tell one other war story, really war story. I'm putting a face with a name. When I was, we were, I was eight years old when we moved to Goshen. And we lived up on Lincoln Avenue, where Cliff Johnson used to live, this little brick house opposite the Hookah Building. And I used to play with, I used to, I went to St. John's Catholic School for a few years. And there's a little boy, he's two years younger than me, and then his brother was in my class, Jackie Eustace, Billy Eustace. And they had a Lionel train set upstairs, that I had countless hours. We played on that train set, Jackie, myself, and his brother, and my brother. They also had the first TV I ever saw. And we would watch Howdy Doody and all those things. And so, it was this relationship, growing up with eight, nine, ten, twelve, fifteen, whatever. And so, then I went to the public school, and I forgot about Jackie. Jackie was the sweetest, nicest young man you'd ever want to have as a child, as a friend. So I came back home from Germany, and I got orders to go to Vietnam, and I was in Anagabakis. And I went in to get a loaf of bread or something, and I saw Billy Eustace in there, brother that was in my class. And I hadn't seen him in years. Billy, how you doing? Well, I just got back from Vietnam. I was a helicopter pilot. And I feel pretty good about being back, with my younger brother Jackie. Remember Jackie? Oh, yeah, sure. Well, he's leaving tomorrow. So am I. And so, about a few weeks after Jackie got over there, he was second lieutenant in the infantry. He was shot and killed. And he was a great guy. So, anyway...
Wasn't Martha the youngest girl in the family? Youngest child?
No, no, she's the cousin.
She's a cousin?
She's the cousin.
Okay, they used to hang together a lot, though, eh?
They lived, I'll tell you where they lived. They lived next to David Dunn on Marie Avenue. And it was Frank was the father, just can't remember the mom's name. Nice, nice people. And, but it was very tragic, the whole thing.
That was with the Blue family later on, too.
And then Michael was my class, my younger brother, who I didn't know.
My David.
David, just going there as well.
Okay, so, and I'll tell you, we all have stories, but this week is sleep week here in New York City, and they're all coming in. And if you can imagine Times Square, this time of day, every branch of service is walking around, and we have the privilege to stay out, lunch with a group of Marines, we sort of that guy, so we stopped and said, hello. Like you said, they all have pins, I don't know if that...
Marines.
But they all have these little black pins, kind of caught by, I said, can you guys tell me what that's about? Do you know what? This is all my dead colleagues.
That's powerful.
They never forget. So we should never forget that.
I agree with you.
They brought us all to you, like...
Oh, yeah, sure.
We're talking about young men. No matter where I am... The twenties of lost their colleagues in Afghanistan, I guess.
No matter where I am, restaurant, public place, if I see a...
Yeah, we did that.
Serviceman, I walk up and I shake hands, like supermarket, no matter.
We should...
We have no idea how much they appreciate it. They all stop, and they thank me.
We should donate, so fifty-first year, forty-third. You would think we went to a...
I do my shop right wherever.
And everywhere you're chatting, you just have to say thank you.
Yeah. More people should do that.
A Marine actually got one on by a cab down from downtown Manhattan.
Today?
Today.
You okay?
No.
No, he died. Twelfth Avenue, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Billy Eustace came back from Afghanistan, said, the guy's probably normal.
Crossed the Twelfth Avenue. It was an accident, according to the...
Yeah. Yeah, it's... You're right, Monday, we should all go out there, and of course, we'll never forget Kennet'sburg, because that was the big, big... Probably more than we'll want to.
We'll go next month, take a membership session.
Okay, well, we, I appreciate the comments, everybody, and we're very, very special. His name was Robert Kimball. You'll look in the doctor dentistry. And this guy was a tall, wanky, slow, sweet, sweet man. You'd never know he was into that kind of stuff. By the way, he said he had three, there were three boys in his family, and he had four male cousins. So there were seven boys, and two of them perished in the war, two out of seven. And they all, all of them, were in the service. That's the contribution that a lot of families made in the Second World War. Okay. Any other, Joel, it's your...
I don't know how to follow that.
Okay.
Well, you don't need to. We know. Smile a lot. Love you.
Tell us about Howdy Doody.
Yeah.
I remember Howdy Doody.
We know that song.
Tell you about Clarabelle.
No, no, no.
Lot too much information, Joel.
Shut the camera off. What's up?
In a way, it kind of relates, because the young people who go into service are basically going into service to protect certain privileges that we have, that we take for granted, in the way we're governed and the way we, our political system works. I had wanted to talk to you tonight about a suggestion that I made informally to you previously, with regard to the New York State Open Meetings Law, and getting some training for all of the town board and people, and perhaps doing it in conjunction with the village. In terms of, I know Bob Freeman and his crew run these presentations for municipalities. And it would be a good opportunity for all of the municipal governing staff and boards to be exposed to this. There was something, what precipitated was the other night at the work session, when Brad Knoll present, was going through all the bids and the quotes, and he had this stuff in written form. And after the meeting, I approached Brad, and I said, if you want to give me that material, we'll put it up with the video, because this is very helpful to people watching the video. Neil, as you've seen, he sometimes superimposes the written material, so people can see it and understand what's being said. And, by the way, this is not to knock you guys or Brad whatsoever. Brad's response was, gee, I don't know, that's really up to the board, which I understand his saying, but that's not the right answer. It was public information presented at a public forum, and the automatic answer should be, sure, no problem, as long as it's not involved with a negotiation, or something that needs to be screened off of public view, should be automatic. And familiarity with the Open Meetings Law would guide somebody in that direction. So that being said, and again, I want to be very clear, I'm not knocking Brad, or you guys, this board in particular has been wonderful about providing information freely, openly, without making us jump through any hurdles or hoops. But I'd like to make the suggestion again, that the board consider a training session for all of the boards, all of the staff of the town, and to, as Phil Dropkin did, make an extension of the offer to the village to do a joint session. Get Bob Freeman down here and run a training session on the open meetings law and the freedom of information laws.
And in deference to Broderick, of course, he's brand-new to the job.
Yeah.
And I'll discuss that with the board. I know that we've all been through some training, with our own attorney. Our attorney went to school with...
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
And so, but I will also say is, is that a lot of time, even after you've been through the training, there are questions. And I always call Dennis and say, "Dennis, what do you think of this? Should it go in executive session, should it go in writer's session or whatever?" And I probably do that once every other week. So even when you are trained, there's some areas that you need to get a second opinion on yourself.
And we're getting, we're getting into an area with technology where some of the clear lines of distinction are getting fuzzy. You know, we've, Neil and I have run into a situation with the village, where the village clerk is not giving us material that has been routinely extended to the press. Saying, "You're not press." Well, that is a fuzzy distinction these days, when you've got, basically, with Twitter and Facebook, and what happened in Egypt and Libya and Tunisia, everybody's press, you know? The distinctions really are breaking down a little bit. So understood that it's not always clear-cut, but what I'm suggesting is that at least people should be aware of what the law is and what the law directs in terms of access, open access to information.
What are the other things that we do have also, Joel, that, and we will discuss this, by the way. I'm going to take your suggestion, we'll discuss it. At each one of our board meetings, we have an attorney. And again, when I put this, this proposal, my agenda together, I always, always send this to Dennis so we can get resolutions and things made and whatnot. He looks at this, he will call me, or I will call him relative if I made a mistake or have a question. On the planning board, ZBA, we've got attorneys there as well, so. But you can never get too much training, we'll just see what the availability is and what the interest is.
With, with the boards, it tends to go chairman by chairman, you know.
Well, we'll discuss it, and then we'll go.
And I'm well aware of, of exactly what you're saying about having an attorney here. And I remember what happened with John Sullivan, going through this press pack thing in the past, which ended up just really being exercise. But, you know, the town board came through that with flying colors, one of the best experiences that he had.
I think we do a good job. I think we really do a good job in town, and...
And I couldn't agree more.
And we're not, I'm sure, be open to the people's criticism. So, but anyway, we'll take this under your...
And again, I want to make it clear, not a criticism whatsoever. This board is absolutely spectacular in terms of...
We always will err on the way to openness and transparency.
But you have a number of boards that you work with, you've got planning and ZBA and...
No, no, I'm not saying that's not a good idea, I'm just telling you that this board, it's easier to put it out on the table for everyone to see. Doug, Doug Blumfield always says, "All of us are smarter than anyone of us," and that really is gospel as far as we're concerned. We'll talk about it.
Good, thank you.
Any other items in the public? Gary? No.
It's true you have an affair with Princess, Princess Summerfield, Winter Spring.
It was summer, fall, winter spring.
That's right.
That's hilarious.
That was the sister.
You get all the sense of this.
So you, you want Howdy Doody, bro?
I had an aunt, a Jewish aunt. This woman could, she could squeeze a nickel. And I can remember she had this little store thing. And she had the first TV up in Quarry Heights. She used to charge the kids a nickel to come in and watch Howdy Doody. Unbelievable.
That's wild.
She died a multi-millionaire.
Absolutely.
And they all, they were Jewish, but they all changed their names. Their name was Silverstein. Then they all became Feeny, which was the father's name.
Okay.
My uncle Mike Silverstein, he was the chief of police in Mount Vernon. Every other year, bookmakers would buy him a new Cadillac. His brother, his brother, my uncle Otto, he was the dog catcher. He'd go scoop your dog up, and then he'd charge you X amount of dollars to get the dog back.
Okay. Okay, so I want to make a motion. We go to executive session, adjourn the meeting and go to executive session, and you attend not to return to talk about the sewer dispute arbitration status, tax surgesary status update, L3 litigation status, the FBI training, police department. And by the way, does anybody else have any ideas? There's one other, I think, the letter to the village that we're...
Yeah, we should discuss that, I think that's in regards the... quasi-arbitration heritage, New York Farm LLC.
All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I believe...